Those numbers are wrong. Or?
Shouldn't.
No, not at this point. I'm gonna leave things as is, I mean, unless they decide they wanna change them, but.
Okay.
That's, that's the commission's.
Question, should we call the meeting in order if you have a question?
I already did.
He already did.
He did.
Mm-hmm.
At six o'clock I did.
Yeah, he called it.
Yeah.
We're just here to buy status.
Well, you guys probably should've had a posted agenda, but.
Thank you.
Uh.
Nobody knows what the meeting was about?
Nobody knew what the meeting was about, other than just a discussion, that's all I was told, we were just discussing it, and I asked for topics. To my, I asked for what we were actually gonna go through, and what was gonna be decided on, I don't know. That's why I have nothing available, Kyle.
I, I will, I will communicate that myself next time differently, I apologize for that, um.
So, can I go back to the per capita?
Yep.
For real quick? So, again, the per capita has always been set seventy-five cents for the communities. The county was always set, I, I looked back for past eleven years, it's always been set at a hundred and twenty-six eighty-four, okay? So I continued up when I came out, trying to figure out how the budget works, it takes a little while, somebody new coming into coordination to figure out what the budgets need to be, how it's set, and so forth. I had been working with Sean Snyder and some of my other old fellow EMAs regarding the budget. Um, I've asked him about the per capita and how they do it, so he shared with me his formula, he actually did, um, do a formula for emergency management here in Casup County, based off of this year's budget that we're in right now. Um, and so, basing that off, like I said, the figures that I was giving, I'm gonna give eleven dollars and some odd cents for the communities to pay, and then, um, the county was a hundred and twelve thousand, so in all, in essence, that all the communities funds together at about a hundred and twelve thousand, and then the county was a hundred and twelve thousand. Our budget has already been set, we can do an amendment if the commission wants to, chose to do so, um, but it's based off of the evaluations, those assessments, the rural, um, Sean, you can chime in too, please, to help me out a little bit, since I'm still learning that formula. Um, and then based off the rural assessment, the unincorporated, that's the county's part. So.
Okay, well, 'cause I, I was pretty sure I'd been told at different times that we were using the, uh, voluntary share allocation, but.
No, not at all.
I didn't know if that had actually been voted on in the bylaws, 'cause I did see that in the code, that, that should be adopted by the whole, but you're saying that was seventy-five cents per capita in the bylaws?
There's nothing in specific in the bylaws, as far as the, the amount, it just says what the four.
It just says it's per capita.
Per capita, yeah.
Okay, so for a hundred and twenty-six, for us even figuring the full county's population, that'd be eight dollars and seventy cents versus seventy-five cents for the cities? Just quick calculator math?
Eight dollars and seventy cents per capita?
Yeah. Hundred and twenty-six thousand divided by fourteen, four seventy-five, I mean, that's quite a difference. I guess, are you guys interested in amending your budget to work through some of this and figure out where everything lands, or, uh, what's the commission's thoughts?
I think the issue for this year is that we were required to certify our budget back by February twenty-eighth, and we did. And we weren't aware that we're gonna have a seventy-five percent cut till after that, so, yeah, the commission would have to sit down and decide what changes you guys are making to your funding. Because obviously here we are in August, and you just finally get the county's budgets done here in the last month. So as a commission, when we met back in February, correct me if I'm wrong, commission,
No, you're right.
we had to certify our budget by February twenty-eighth and submit it.
And we certified a full budget without the fifty percent.
Because we weren't aware of, right.
We, we talked about fifty percent prior to that.
We did, but the commission voted the full budget.
Right.
And then.
Is anybody in this room here or present when this, uh, EMA began? I don't even know who the sheriff was and who the auditor was, or did the bylaws go back that far?
Uh.
They should.
I've been on since Jim Kelly was here. Jim, most of the paperwork I have in my office is all Jim's, and then.
Because I, I'm not aware of what was originally set up, if it was set up by the per capita, or if it was, or it wasn't.
It was per capita going back through, and I do not know, I said that before, I don't know where the seventy-five cents came from, it, this has continued through the years, and that's what I continue to use, because it was continued through the years, and I got here talking about it at one of our, um, D two district meetings for emergency management, and we're talking about per capita, because the twenty-nine C is bill was up last year, and we're going through, and I'm like, okay, so, how come your guys' per capita seems so much more than what mine is, it's because putting all the communities together is about seven dollars a dollar, and and that's where Sean goes, well, uh, how are you calculating, and so I explained to him, I said, I guess it's seventy-five cents, I'm not sure what it came from. And so, you've been helping me work through those things, so we can get back on track to where it's supposed to be. If we continue with the per capita and if the twenty-nine C bill changes or public.
So how did you get to the eleven dollars per capita?
Do you care if I have Sean, Sean, and he's the one that did the formula?
No, that's fine, I just worked from seventy-five.
Hey Sean, if you're on, can you, uh, tell them how you calculated that for the communities?
Hey, good, uh, good evening, everyone, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for, uh, letting me have a couple minutes of your time here. But basically, think of the per capita formula as whatever her total, uh, operating budget is, uh, the commission approved operational budget, you just divide that by your twenty-twenty census, uh, for, for Casup County, and I'm going off memory here, I went and that pulled up, I made, is your population like fourteen thousand and change, something like that?
Fourteen eight twenty-eight.
Yeah. So what you, so basically take that, uh, that number divided into, uh, your total operational budget, that gets you your dollar amount. And then, uh, the formula that, that we use, uh, in Winishe County, uh, because I don't, I assume that Carissa's, uh, the, the county side, the county contribution is being, uh, levied through like the general supplemental? Or is she in the general from basic, what do you guys use?
General supplemental this year.
General sup?
Yeah.
Yep, so, uh, through that formula that I, that I provided her, we're crediting back the cities for the, the taxes they already pay in to the general fund. You know, as you guys are fully aware, uh, every city resident pays into their, their municipal taxes, plus they pay into your general fund, so you don't, you wanna avoid a double taxation issue, uh, for the municipal residents, so, she's got that formula, she can, uh, she can show it to you guys, but basically, you're, you're you're taking the, uh, overall Casup County valuation total, and then, uh, basically dividing the uh, the rural charge for municipal resident against your guys' overall county valuation, that gives you a percentage. Then, uh, using the dollar amount, uh, breakdown that I, that I spoke of earlier for the per capita, uh, basically her overall budget, uh, divided into how many people, you take that percentage and, uh, take that against that dollar amount, and that's what she would charge, would, would charge each one of the municipalities. And then the remainder of that falls on the unincorporated part, uh, for you guys to backfill, does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of, yeah, I mean, it'd make more sense if I saw it probably, but yeah, I follow it.
So, so you're saying if her, if her operating budget was ninety thousand, um, the per capita is gonna be less, because so it's dependent on what her operating budget is?
Right.
Okay.
That, that's correct, yep, whatever her operational budget is, that's, that's your starting point. Divide that by the coun, by the total number of people in your, in your county. That's, that's what your dollar amount per, per person, whether it's city or rural, is being, you know, that, that's the cost of doing business for emergency management, basically, and then you gotta uh, take off the percentage that, uh, they're already paying in the taxes, so you avoid a double taxation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Any other questions for me?
What kind of fund balance do you guys have right now?
So, I manage the, uh, day-to-day operation dispatch center, so my, it's not apples to apples, uh, my budget versus hers, but, uh, you know, best practice of any budget, you guys know this, up twenty-five percent is kind of, uh, you know, that, uh, counting principles.
Yeah.
And Sean, sorry if I missed it, but what county are you from?
Winishe.
Winishe.
Thank you.
All right, well, board have any other questions right now, or commission, anyone from the commission have anything?
So I got a question, so.
Yep.
You subtract, you subtract for the, for the municipals, the towns, you subtract whatever they're already paying, and then whatever that number is, that gets pushed back to the county? To equal the budget? Or how much?
Sean, can, Sean, can you walk through that briefly again?
Yeah, so, uh, I, I've got the Excel sheet in front of me here, so to give you an idea, uh, what city are you from, sir?
Laverne.
Okay, Laverne, so Laverne's got a population of two hundred and fifty-eight, your, uh, your allocation before we, we take and credit back uh, to the city would be four thousand ninety-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, okay? Now, we're going to take the percentage that you pay into rural, which is about, uh, thirty-two percent, but we're gonna credit you seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. But your, your total, uh, allocation to Casup County Emergency Management would be three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and nine cents. Okay, so, that's kinda how that works out for the city of Laverne.
So who pays that seven hundred dollars, uh, was credited back, is that getting pushed back to the county?
That's what the county portion is already paying.
That's coming off, that is not being levied against the city, so it's not going anywhere, it's staying in your pockets as the city, does that make sense?
Yes, I gotta know. But where does the EMA make up that difference, so, where does the commission make up that difference? Because we have twelve commuters. Yeah, because that's gotta go towards the budget, so that's what I'm saying, does the county pick up that extra?
That's already being taxed by the county.
That means the, the rural people are paying more than eight fifty.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, you're breaking up a lot there, I, I don't think I caught all of that.
If, if, if two people are talking at the same time, the owl will not be able to translate the, the audio to Sean, so, um, Sean, can you explain what happens with that seven hundred and fifty dollar credit or whatever, and who pays that? Is that added to the county's portion on that we would charge on general supplemental?
That's what we already charge.
No, the way, the way I look at it, uh, that seven hundred and fifty dollar credit stays within the city of Laverne, right, it's, it's, the commission would've, would've sent them an invoice for four thousand some dollars, whatever I said earlier, and instead, they're, they're taking that credit off, and they're just sending an invoice for three hundred, for, for three thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and nine cents. The, the shortcomings or whatever, or the, the remainder of the, the overall budget would come out of the general fund, or the general supplemental. Excuse me, um, does that make sense?
Yes.
So, I mean, it's probably not gonna be a fifty-fifty wash, so to speak, uh, you know, just because of the population base, it really depends, if, if your rural, uh, population in Casup County outnumbers all of, it's like you got a lot of cities, is that eleven cities, ten cities, whatever it is, if your rural population outnumbers your eleven or s- ten cities, then the county is going to pay more, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, but it, our unincorporated population would be less than the total city population.
Which is.
So then, uh, then I would assume that the cities would, combined, their totals would, uh, would, you know, would be more than what the unincorporated part of the county would be.
That would make sense.
But I don't, I don't know what her, I don't know what her overall budget is, so I don't, I can't say for sure, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you happen to know what most counties in Iowa do? Do they do the per capita, or do they do the voluntary share, or do they have a special levy?
I would say the vast majority pull it from the county, from the supplemental. Um, because everybody pays taxes, everybody pays in, uh, I, I would say you, the way you guys are doing it, uh, is not wrong by any means, don't take it that way, but, uh, uh, there's probably just, I don't have the number in front of me, I'm betting ten counties-ish do per capita, the vast majority do, uh, the levy.
Okay.
It just.
I'll give you my numbers, I don't have that in front of me, so.
Not sorry.
You have something else, Roger?
I just, I haven't read through this through, I don't know, maybe Todd knows or Tammy, but who makes that decision? If it goes to a levy, does it commission, or does it board supervisors, or all above?
Commission.
The commission.
Commission.
And then does it go to a vote to the people? No? Okay. Like I said, I didn't read through it, I'm just giving it through the silencer.
That's the prior language, right?
The old, the old, the two thousand and eleven, it was changed in two thousand and twelve. In two thousand and eleven, it was by approval of the board of supervisors.
Yeah.
They struck that language and put all of the authority within the commission.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's countywide special levy pursuant to three thirty-one, four twenty-four subsection one. So whatever's, whatever fine details or specifics is there, that's the reference.
Can you say that again, Carl?
Three thirty-one point four two four subsection one. Yep.
And you should have that in that, I sent that twenty-nine C out to your guys, so it should be there to talk about. Number I C seventeen, I sent out to the commissions.
All right, any, anyone else have any comments? I don't wanna be the only one here.
As far as, I mean, I've kinda taken the conversation a little different direction, but as far as the relationship between the two boards, um, especially in the claims process, even, um, I, I don't think in your commission meetings, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong, you guys don't approve claims, or, or do you, I would assume not, since you don't mean monthly. And the board of supervisors approves the claims, and it it just seems after reading this, you should have more authority in approving your own claims, um, being you're a separate agency, you're entity than the county. Um, so that was just another topic of conversation, and how to how to go about moving forward with that, um.
Yep, and conservation is a, a comparable agency, it is, it does have an, another board, um, but they are still directly with the county, so, um, there's actually more authority with emergency management than there is with conservation, and they still approve their claims, so that's probably something that'll need to change going forward, is you guys will need to review claims and act on those before we would be able to process them here. Which would give you a better understanding of what's going on, and, um, more hands-on knowledge that way, too. But they, all the claims for conservation, we still approve them in the boardroom, but it's after concert, the conservation board reviews them first. Is there any questions on that, or comments, or?
Well, and really, it's, I mean, we can even say no to conservation claims. To a point, I mean, because they are a county division,
Yeah.
a direct agency of the county, but being EMA is not a direct agency of the county, I don't like the board of supervisors. I mean, I don't know if there's any gray area in there or not, but we don't have the authority to even say, no, you can't pay this, or yes, you can pay this, I mean, do we, or, I mean, I think that's the question.
And, and that's where you guys should be.
Is that correct? Um.
LEMC is a county municipal hybrid public agency, not a county agency, subject to the control of the county board of supervisors.
Right.
Um, the employees are, or are employees of the commission, and the commission determines personal policies, including holidays, basically, vacation and health benefits, um, goes on to say, the authorities currently established that LEMC is an independent hybrid commission, cannot harm either city or county government.
Right.
Like, the point being, we're not as separated as we need to be, in that regard.
Yep.
So still being quite new to this, what do we do, what do we do next, what, what's our, how do we proceed?
We need to set up a committee to go through it once a month, we need to get our, uh, bylaws in order, and figure out, get our, uh, funding figured out, I mean, that's what we gotta do, that's what I'm getting at, that's, I think it's kinda, we got, we got a little work to do. I think you guys gotta agree with me.
Yeah.
I mean, I, we, we need to get back together, we need to, we, we got much stuff to go over.
Yeah, and I guess, since we've been reviewing that code section, I think that, that'd be a good topic of conversation for your next meeting to discuss all these things, and, and maybe it's good to have a kinda more separate organizational meeting and not talk on all the other day-to-day business, because these are probably topics that are requiring a little more focus and attention.
Exactly, the funding that you turn down to us, you legally can't turn down, correct?
If it's per capita, and if it's even shared that way, yeah, I mean, I was under the assumption that it was voluntary, because I've been told that multiple times, but.
I don't, I don't have the clue, so.
Yeah.
You get more into it the night you're still. And obviously, we've been doing, we're gapping around.
Yep.
And that was what I didn't.
Yeah, well, you're fighting it out too, I, I'm just saying, we, it's like we got a mess, we gotta get cleaned up.
And I wanted to try to do that by October, and start working on getting that.
I don't have enough time.
We're all learning things here.
Yeah, and I understand, you guys are short on money, I understand that, I mean, yeah.
And I just wanna point out, um, you know, we're here August twentieth, um, as I mentioned earlier, the code changed in two thousand and twelve to provide that no longer does the supervisors, nor any city, uh, have the power to, um, I guess, adjust or, or, um, refuse the budget as presented by the commission. Uh, it turned general on, on May twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. In response to a question based upon the change in the, the law, uh, came down with an opinion, uh, which I've reviewed and agree with, and it specifically states two things that have been discussed tonight. Number one, there's no grant of power through the administrative rules, or Iowa Code Chapter twenty-nine C, or in the Code, Iowa Code Title Nine, of local government assigning power to the county board of supervisors, or to the city councils of the county to approve or veto the approved bylaws of the LEMC, which we have at the Emergency Management Commission here. So regardless of what they decide, as far as the bylaws and the funding, we don't, as county, have any control over that. We do have a member on there, and each city has a member on there, so that's where the discussion comes in. But then in reference to the funding, as I've mentioned previously, um, there are no provisions in these reference statutes granting unilateral powers to the county to set or veto funding, or other policies adopted by the L, LEMC, um, and so, you know, they have a, a deadline in February, what?
Twenty.
Twenty eighth, twenty eighth, to certify. You know, these discussions need to happen long before that. That's the issue, that's where I think, and there's no single place to point the finger at, there's a lot of, of things and variables that took place during all of this, I mean, it's just, it was, uh, uh, maybe the perfect storm, if you call it that. Uh, so, in looking at where do we go from here, and again, I have no control, no say, but in just listening to the discussion, instead of going back in time, let's look towards the future as to how we can correct it, um, because apparently, I may have been here a little screen.
I don't remember.
Been here since two thousand and one, so.
I've been here since eighty-seven.
Yeah, so, I mean, uh.
I worked the shit out, I just don't remember what the, what, how it was organized back then, I don't remember.
You know, I, I think looking at it from the, the standpoint of, uh, moving into the future, uh, maybe it's a good time to start discussions now regarding what are we gonna do for next year?
Right.
Right, I mean, instead of having discussions and trying to figure out what do we do for that, which is in the past, what are we gonna do coming into it? Because it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what was budgeted or paid the last year. So there's no change, there was no increase, and how long has that been?
At least good thirteen years, that's.
That.
About a dollar out.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, it's not out of the ordinary, it's not something that was a surprise. Um, that's just my two cents, again, I have no authority, no, no, uh, but since I'm here, I thought I'd put my two cents out there, uh, as to where we go from here, because I think it sounds like somewhat of a contentious situation if we should happen to try and go back and fix what's already in the works and certify.
And I do agree with Todd, I'm moving forward, and if we fix that per capita, we continue that route, and so forth, and that's why I'm here.
And I will mimic that also, as auditor, I have to certify the budget, and, um, I'm gonna follow the advice that Todd gives me, so if, you know, he tells me that we need to revert back to last year, that's what I'm gonna do.
People think you have a choice.
Not in my mind.
Bypasses the board of supervisors, and goes directly to you to pay the
Yeah.
per capita, that's the way I look at it.
Well, if you figure seventy-five cents per capita, that's less than eleven thousand dollars for us.
Yeah, but therefore, certified, certified a number, and that's the number I'm using this year. Next year, that's totally different, that can be a totally different number, unless I'm understanding it wrong.
Yeah, it can be a totally different number, yes.
Yeah. Well, I think that's, we need to sit down and figure out, what is that number, what's an easy, or what's a standard formula that we've been lived by that.
And that goes, goes back to the line items, and going through, which, when you cut, and, or which I've been doing, looking at, how can we cut those one things? What can we spend down, those type of things, and that makes our budget, so every year, that budget fluctuates.
Yeah, no, I get that, I'm just saying, this, this per capita thing, if it's been on by that far for this many years, the commission needs to sit down and decide how they wanna do it.
Yeah.
But it's fair. We need to get it going right there.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Obviously, some forward.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's, fair for everybody.
There's also the option of.
The gentleman on the phone, or wherever he's at, also said there's ten counties that do a per capita. I mean, maybe we need to look at a levy and see where that's, where that knocks us out of there. I mean, I, we need to kick this around and get it figured out, so.
So is the levy, like the EMS levy, they said, no, that'll be totally different, it's not.
It'd be similar to a woman.
Or, well, we, we.
That's the one.
Unless that twenty-nine C goes through, we have that ability as.
I would vote it off.
Do you know though what changes was, what did we talk about?
That is different.
Well, I mean, like, it's, it's like. Talked about their changes for their, how much is their.
So, as a.
Their funding would come from a.
Well, I know that would burn, I'm twenty-nine C that.
Yes. The, the back end result would be similar.
Um, I'm hoping to have our ability to tax levy. Um, and if that passes with the twenty-nine C, then we'll have the ability as the Commission to tax levy like EMS does. But that's, again, has to go through the, starting from scratch, from the very beginning again, because it didn't go through that, go through the whole.
The twenty-nine C?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That can, that can.
And even after that, a tax levy like EMS did, we're still looking a couple of years out. So we need to put something in place prior to that taking effect. I mean, even if it goes into effect in August, you don't see money for two more years, just.
No, probably.
So, I mean, that's something the Commission needs to. First off, we need to sit down and understand it. So that everybody's on the same page, because I, well, I'm sorry, I showing up tonight, I had no, no expectations. I, I had no idea what we were doing here. So.
And I think that's true.
Uh, yeah. Sorry, Josh, I was.
I, and I wasn't trying to be cryptic on anything.
No, and there's, there's no accusation to cryptic this. It's just, there was nothing. There was no read ahead. There was no discussion notes. There was no nothing. So, in the future, do something to think about.
Yeah.
But.
So, yes, that was my plan, is to sit down, we're gonna go through all of this and our bylaws as well.
Yeah.
And I'll have, and maybe a different formula.
Yeah.
So.
Right, or some kind of standard formula to go by, or agree with that, that's all fine and good. If we don't agree with that, then we need to adjourn to that.
Yes. And I do look to go to a separate night, kind of, regular meeting too. So this is all for discussing that, that, that.
Well, and I guess I understand the thought of doing stuff moving forward, but like Kevin said earlier, this is probably a big enough issue that it should be addressed sooner than later.
We gotta get moving on this.
And, I mean.
We got a lot of stuff to work out before, before February.
Yeah.
I'd like to have, most of it set stone by December, in case you have a hiccup in January.
Thank you. That's my.
I mean, we get, we gotta, we gotta be moving on this. This is, I think it's a big issue.
Well, and.
We got bylaws and changes. We got, we got a bunch of stuff to take care of.
Right. And if you start approving claims every month, that'll give more opportunities for meetings and stuff too, but I mean.
We don't see them. They go straight to the board?
So, that's how all the emergency managers do. They set it all to the auditor. They, they don't go through the board.
The, the auditor will still pay them, but you have to have them approved by you at board, not necessarily.
I need to be dumb, but what kind of claims are we talking about?
Like.
Like current bills, uh.
Every. Every single bill that comes in for emergency management.
Everything should be public servicing.
Every dollar that's spent.
How about you're gonna start seeing more counties having their EMA board start doing this one forward? Because that's the law. It's been that way since twelve, two thousand twelve.
Well, that.
Changed to, uh.
Was it twen- two thousand twenty, is it?
It would've, it would.
Two thousand twelve is when it changed.
Two thousand twelve, okay, on Commission. Yeah, twelve years.
But I guess even with what we have in the budget right now, we would still have more than the seventy-five cents, so.
We haven't got the buildings figured out either.
So that was gonna be my next question, while I'm waiting for this.
Yeah, how do we even approach claims until we figure out the building?
So, that's a question I think the EMA would like to know, so we can move forward on this, is where does the board set on this building situation? Is it gonna be leased? Is it gonna be, are we gonna be paying a fee? I mean, I think the Commission has a right to know where we stand with that part. And I don't know if you guys have been discussing or not. I kind of thought that was the purpose of the meeting tonight, was about the lease and seventy-five percent cut on the funding. But I think before the EMA starts working on this budget, which we need to do, we also need to know, are we gonna be staying in that building? Are we gonna be paying lease? Are we gonna be?
So the, the claims, the claims in discussion for the lease are kind of two separate things. The claims are normal bills that come in every day. That, it's a piece of the budget, but it's separate from the building discussion.
But if there's a monthly lease, we need to be aware of that.
That'd be a budgetary piece of the puzzle, yes. But, I guess, I don't know, Carissa, you talked with Phil on utility splits or anything? Because I talked with him here earlier today.
We were just splitting utilities, yeah.
Do you come up with a percentage at all? Because?
We've talked. We haven't met yet, because he was on and I was gone, so we were supposed to meet this weekend.
Okay, that's not the message I got from him, but, okay.
Yeah. What did you get from him?
That nothing was gonna be discussed until the Commission met and decided something. So. I, I don't know.
That was a miscommunication between both of us, when I said we imagined, I told them what they're doing, and they're fine with us dividing the utilities, so we haven't. Thought I had not met with that.
I thought we were looking at a three-way split.
Through E nine-one-one and, but they only have the vehicle.
They probably have a smaller percentage.
Because they were talking, what was it? I don't care what the top man, was it forty, forty, twenty? Was it forty-five, forty-five? And I don't remember.
I had the forty-five, forty-five.
See, I, I don't have my notes in front of me, so I don't know, my memory is horrible.
Forty-five, forty-five, yeah.
Yeah, so there, there has been discussion, so.
Yeah, and that's all we got, so.
We just haven't really been pointing down what is, what is what, is what it is.
Technically, it's gonna probably go on next year's budget anyway, so it's probably gonna roll away. It's this year. So we have time for that to get figured out. I mean, we don't, we do.
But yeah, I mean, the claims would be a whole separate topic. That's just normal business for us every two weeks in general, or first and third Tuesday, so. Whenever you want claims submitted, just need a meeting ahead of that, so you guys can review them. But that's just kind of standard business.
So, the Board of Supervisors hasn't been communicating about a lease agreement per, for the EMA, Emergency Management, for the use of the building, or if it gets subleased, if a local business wants to use it for meetings, if the Sheriff's Office wants to use it for training. Who makes that decision? Whose budget does it come out of? Whose budget does it come into as revenue? I mean, I, you guys own the building, correct?
Yeah.
And I thought that's what kind of kickstarted all this, was questions on, as a Commissioner, I wanna know, are we gonna be in that building next year? Or do we need to certainly grow our own building? I don't know. Because that's one of the questions that I thought was brought up several months ago, was if Carissa wants to let Hormel use it for a three-day training, is that gonna be, need to be approved by the Board? By the Commission? Maybe they're gonna pay a fee to come in there and use it? I know I've used it for training.
Yeah, and that's, that's a fair question, but that wasn't the, and I also apologize.
It's a question that we also need to know when we're putting our budget together.
Yeah, but that has, that was not what we were gonna talk about tonight. We can, but we haven't, we haven't had any further conversations on it as a board, because we were leaving it up to those of you currently using the building to get together and discuss and come back to us, and we haven't gotten anything back yet, so.
But that's just utilities. Yeah, I, I think the utilities is. That was all we brought up, Kurt, it was brought up several months ago.
Yep.
That's what they need to discuss, but it's not really set stone.
And that is, I mean, it does loosely tie into the conversation with the separate structure of the Commission. And that's one of the things Todd talked about, was a reason for needing a documented lease is because of a separate organizational structure, so.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I just briefly remember we had conversations about that, about the liability issue if other people use it. Um, you know, the county owns it, but the EMA, you know, it was purchased with Oracle funds. There's a lot, am I wrong? Am I the only one sitting in this room thinking that we had all these discussions? And now, now it seems like it just kinda got forgotten about? I think we need to know that as an EMA Commission, if we're gonna work on refixing this budget, are we gonna be paying a lease for the building? Are we gonna be used, you know, be able to use it, and just make sure we spare, share the utility cost? Those are things that you guys need to tell us when we're working on, are we gonna go to a levy? Are we gonna go to per capita? The good news is we got an ending fund balance right now. That ending fund balance is gonna disappear if we are gonna have cuts, or if we're gonna have increases on how we're gonna pay to use the building. I think it's a fair question that we need as, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna have any say on how you guys set for your budget, because I'm not a mayor. I'm a sheriff. But I will be on part of the Commission to say, well, what are we gonna pay you for using this building, or how are we gonna lease it? I think those are fair questions that we need to have answers to, so that when we move forward, decide if we're gonna levy or do per capita, what are the expenses besides utilities? You're gonna have utilities no matter where you go, but what are the expenses to use that building? The upkeep, the maintenance, all of that stuff's gotta follow up.
Maintenance is gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, someday the roof's gonna need to be replaced or whatever, so.
It's gonna be a big issue.
And really, I mean, for that aspect of it, we, we talked briefly about just absorbing the repairs and stuff through the Board and the county, but with this being a separate agency, is that really fair or not? Don't know.
Yeah, and that's, I don't need an answer tonight. I just think that's something you guys need to be, you know, Tammy's technically in terms of building, so what if the roof collapses next spring? You know, is the EMA all of a sudden gonna be billed a, a lease, or, you know, we're gonna have to start paying for something? I'm just talking out loud, because if we're gonna work on a budget, we need to know what's gonna cost to utilize that building besides utilities.
Do you, uh, do you think it'd be prudent to have a, some kind of a fund for maintenance for the building?
Well, I know, I have a line item for it, you know, for, for my budget, but I don't know, does EMA have a line item for that? We don't, do we?
No, no, no.
No.
No, no reason to at this time.
Because we were renting a facility. That was falling apart, is why we need to get out of there.
Yeah, and it was.
And there's no complaints about this facility, but I think we need to know as a Commission, is there gonna be future expenses?
So the proper, I would think the proper structure to do for something like that would be charging whatever in the form of rent, and then we would put that in a capital improvement fund on our side as an expense, and then it could sit there.
Toward the building?
Toward, toward building repair, yep. Maintenance, whatever.
And that would be good to know, because otherwise, I think as a Commission, we'd have to put a line item in for expenses and add that to that levy or per capita.
Yep.
Well, you're looking, you're looking at property taxes and.
We don't pay property taxes.
Okay, so insurances?
Insurance, yep.
Yep, mainly insurance and maintenance and upkeep. So, okay, the, the nine-one-one and, um, what's the other one? EMS, is EMS separate then? Are they county?
EMS is separate.
They're county, okay.
EMS is county.
Separate from you guys, but yes, it's, it's county, it's a county department.
Right, nine-one-one's county.
Yep.
Yeah, but we're separate, so now, do we take money, are you leasing to us then, and then we take money from them?
So.
For their part, or I mean?
E nine-one-one is also separate. That's a separate entity as well. So Sheriff and EMS are county departments. EMA and E nine-one-one are separate agencies. So that's where we were talking about doing lease or rental agreements with EMA and E nine-one-one, that, but we still have to incorporate the other pieces of the puzzle into whatever's crafted, because we have to know that on the backside to have something that works for all parties, so.
Do you think you would have an answer for still before the end of the year, so that when we're getting our?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, budget ready by February?
Yeah, I mean, end of the year should be an easy timeline to make. And then, whatever that dollar figure would equate to for utilities, plus whatever for maintenance and stuff, like that could be incorporated in your next budget at that time.
I'm talking to the EMA Commission about something that we gotta think about, what is our budget, if we know what's coming down the road.
I think the other thing that we need to look at is maybe a twenty-eight E agreement between the Board of Supervisors and the EMA Commission to help with that, that's a part of it. That's just an agreement versus the, which conclude the lease part of it, but it's an agreement saying that, yes, we're utilizing Houston County building. It's an agreement amongst both agencies, and it's separate.
Todd, do you have any thoughts on that? Or whether it would need to be a twenty-eight E or not?
Or, I don't see the, I don't see the relevance of a twenty-eight E agreement in this situation, a simple lease. We have a lease with the city uh, for sharing of the LEC.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I mean, maybe I'm missing the point, um, but a twenty-eight E agreement, uh, I think would be duplicative in that situation.
That's what I'm thinking with the lease, that's why I was asking what, what do we see in that?
The city and the LEC building much the same way. The sheriff's spaces with.
Surrounding counties with twenty-eight E agreements. It's more of a mutual aid.
Mutual aid. Here, we have a lease with the city
Yep.
for portion of the building, which is very easily drafted in this situation to lease whatever. I mean, those details would have to work out, but E nine-one-one, um, you know, EMS and EMA, you know, these are the, the section. We also have, um, uh, storage agreements with, uh, think the city for little portions of the, the, that, um, building, so.
Yeah, that should be done now, I believe.
It's just the bigger picture. It includes the office space, includes the lease, it includes vehicles, et cetera, that's.
Which is what you can do in a lease, you know, units.
Yeah.
Without having to, you know, go through the hassle.
My first thought, I would agree. I think that would be a duplicative thing to do a twenty-eight E also. I think lease would cover it.
I mean, and I, we have leases with other governmental entities too. We have, um,
Well, Sheriff's Office has.
Public Defender's Office.
Yeah, Sheriff's Office has one with every city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the twenty-eight E agreements we mostly have is because we don't have a lease or another agreement in place, and that's the purpose of having a twenty-eight E for most of them that we currently have.
Let's do the lease.
And it's not necessarily for property, it's for services being provided, right? Which they are obligated by code to provide those services to the counties and the cities.
Well, are you guys good with trying to, like, Kevin was talking, look at what your options are and kind of go through and review some of that and see where everything falls for working on it, and then we can go from there, if anything needs to be changed.
Okay, we, you guys need to decide budget, because I am not extending this anymore. You got to decide. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You guys have to decide that, because I am not extending this anymore. You have to decide what you're gonna do. The library's waiting for a budget amendment. I'm waiting to get done with this. You've gotta make a decision.
Because this discussion was going forward, like Todd said, but you also didn't, I mean, you said, you know, this year, you have to do what, the hundred and twenty-six thousand or whatever it was.
I guess, I think it should be for this year as well for conversation. I don't, I don't think it should wait. If you go seventy-five cents per capita, we're a long ways off.
But then, they have to amend their budget.
Yeah, well, they amend their budget, or we amend ours.
Yeah.
You're supposed to take what number we certify, correct?
Yes.
Then, then I guess you get attorneys fighting over the, what's right, what's wrong, and then that's gonna cost more. You're worried about money now, it's just another lawsuit for the county, so. I agree with your attorney. I just say, let's just, let's move on. You know, just be done with this.
That's what I'm gonna do.
I'm also, I also think we should have cut money too, and I didn't. I agree with you guys on that, but we didn't. But, and going forward, I'll speak a little more on money wise with the county, what the county's got going on, what we got going on, so. Because we do have, what, we got three hundred thousand in our excess? Yeah, so. I, like I said, I screwed up. I felt we, well, we should have probably cut some out last time, but we didn't, so.
I know you hesitated on that, but.
I did.
But, fund balance generally isn't used for operating expenses.
I understand that, but this guy's telling us twenty-five percent is what normal counties carry over.
Twenty-five percent, as long as you have a capital improvement plan, which I'm, that's one thing that we've talked about, our strategic plan, a capital improvement plan. So we can have more than twenty-five percent, as long as we have a capital improvement plan. So, that's one thing that I've asked the Commission that we need to talk about. I think I brought that up back in.
Well, I'm not mad about that, I'm just saying.
No, no, so we can have more than that twenty-five percent, as long as we have a capital improvement, or a strategic plan, or a five-year plan. That does, that will cover that.
But I'm also a team player, when the supervisors come out and say, hey, we're looking to take, you know, subtract money, I mean, I thought we could have probably stepped up and done that, but I didn't say enough, and I didn't do nothing, so. I failed at that, and nothing against. but I didn't say enough, and I didn't do nothing, so I failed at that, and nothing against what we did, we did what we did, but. No, I, I agree with what you're saying, Kevin, because I felt the same way, but we didn't know if this is a one-year cut or a permanent cut. Yeah, right. And if it's just a one-year cut, we can deal with it, but if it's a permanent cut, but now that I know that you guys have to, whatever we certify, that's a whole different story, but you're right, there are ways that we can look at. You know, but as an EMA commission, we also have to think about, we're one major disaster from that ending fund balance disappearing.
Right.
It might get reimbursed for FEMA three, five, three to five years later, but we're one major disaster from that ending fund balance disappearing.
And we're a larger county than any other.
And, and, and maybe this is a little bit outside the funding conversation for budget purposes, but I mean, we've been through two federally declared disasters since I've been on the board, and I don't know how much emergency management is actually spent on those actual disasters. So, I mean, there's.
County?
Yeah, emergency management for, for actually spending a lot of our fund balance hypothetically, like.
What was the disaster that we were talking about?
We had, well, actually.
Water damage?
We had presidential disaster declaration eighteen, nineteen, and now here in twenty-four.
For crops or for water damage, I can't remember, I'm asking.
It was flooding, yeah, flooding. Altery.
Would you go right and provide the equipment to communities to, is there a fee or a cost for that, do they get assessed a charge?
No, it's.
Because you were all over the place this year.
Yep, gas, it's time, it's.
And it comes out of whose budget?
Comes out of emergency management budget.
Right.
Yep, the gas goes out of emergency.
She was all over the place, Clay County, Humble County, Ballala County, Casusa County, Sway City, Woodmore, Laverne, Elgona, I mean, and I'm just going off the top of my head the last year, and that came out of our budget. So, you know, it's, I understand what you're saying, but basically, it comes out of our budget.
And if we couldn't have got the pumps that we needed, we would have been buying a pump to bring, to help with the water, so, yes, that would have been equipment charging on dollars.
Well, I think moving forward, just the key for this, moving into the fall and winter is communication. That wasn't the greatest this past year, I've learned a lot, I think we've all learning a lot here, as far as how we need to function and how we need to do things moving forward. We can learn from all that and, and move on here, but Tammy, you're looking for a motion then?
Yeah.
I'm looking for direction, yes.
Direction, motion to direct you to do something?
Yeah.
Well, just, a motion to direct the auditor to award this right. You never removed the funding to begin with, did you?
Um, it's not in our budget.
It's not in the budget, so to reinstate the, the funding for emergency management and include it in the, um, upcoming budget amendment. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a dollar amount?
Of, uh, was that a hundred and twenty-six thousand eighty-four dollars?
Well, that's the total, so the budget amendment would be told that I have that number.
Thirty-six thousand.
So we'd be adding ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars for a total of one thirty-eight, two forty-three. That includes the, the NCR, whatever that amount is, the NCRRC.
Right, right, right.
Because that's all together in one line item.
That's right.
Do you want that amount in there?
That'd be fine, yeah. And if you wanna reread that back?
Sure.
Please.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. And then you can ever get that row, you can repeat it to everyone?
Okay. Motion by NAS, second by Jerks, to direct the auditor to reinstate the funding for EMA and include in the budget amendment in the amount of an additional ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay, is there any discussion on that? Any discussion, okay? Um, I guess, I don't know, I still have some questions as far as bylaws and what was, what should have been done, and I know there's history there that we probably won't answer tonight, but, um, I guess.
Call for a question.
Roll call vote.
The motion will call for a question.
That is of motion.
You said roco?
Yeah.
Okay, Jerks?
Yes.
Lacter?
Yes.
NAS?
Yes.
Stecker?
Abstain. Motion carries. Is there anything else anyone wants to discuss on emergency management here yet tonight with funding?
Did you, Carissa, did you agree with that amount that I said?
The one twenty-six, twelve ninety-four?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Do you have everything you need, Tammy?
I have everything I need out, so the plan is, um, to set the date and time next week, um, and then it'll be posted or published the fourth and fifth, and we'll have the budget amendment hearing September seventeenth, is that correct?
That's what you said this morning, I think, that's what I said. Very good.
All right, well, if not, I, if nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn. There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. There you go.
Don't make sure he's not dying.
I didn't say that.
Thank you, you guys, that was a, it was a good meeting.